Good afternoon. I'll call to order the November 2 meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I chair the commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Slack, Rockwell, Gisselman, and Forney. This time, I'll ask that you please silence your electronic devices. And our first item of business today is to approve the actions from the October 19 meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to sort the agenda, determine which items will be on consent, which we will discuss, and which items will be continued. So I'll start at the top of the agenda. Item number one is Anashnabi at 1600 East 19th Street. That is a final plat. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item number two is the University and Monument sign at 925 4th Street Southeast. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, that will also be on consent. Item number three is the Boston Field Park improvements at 5601 28th Avenue South. Conditional use permit and a variance related to a fence there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item number four is M.I.N.C. Loring Park at 1409 Willow Street. That's a conditional use permit related to some telecommunications equipment there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item number five is Village Market at 912 East 24th Street, 2301 Elliot Avenue South, and 2218 through 2220 10th Avenue South. That's an expansion of nonconforming use and a site plan review. We will discuss that item. Item number six is the Mount Olivet Careview Home addition at 5517 Lindale Avenue South. That item will be continued to the November 16 meeting. Several applications related to a building addition there. Item number seven is the Atzerford International Trucks at 3000 Broadway Street Northeast. Conditional use permit and a site plan review related to a building addition there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put item seven on consent. Item eight is 3301 First Avenue South. That's an expansion of a nonconforming multifamily dwelling. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item nine is a zoning code text amendment related to emergency and overnight shelters. We will discuss that item. Item 10, also a zoning code text amendment. This one is related to the allowable square footage of certain uses. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item number 11 is a zoning code text amendment related to small-scale grain milling. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, 10, and 11 will be on consent. We will discuss items 5 and 9, and item 6 will be continued. May have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. There is no committee of the whole consent agenda today, so we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That is items 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, 10, and 11. Is anyone wishing to speak on any of those items? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. We'll move on to our two items for discussion next. Our first item for discussion is item 5, Village Market, and Hillary Dvorak is staff.
This is a public hearing item for you before you tonight, excuse me, for the Village Market development. This has been before this commission in August of this year, August 17 to be exact. And it was continued to the September 21 public hearing, has been subsequently continued since then to tonight's meeting. And given the timeframe and the 61/20 day clock, this is the last time that this can be continued in this commission, so we do need an action tonight on this item in order to allow for an appeal process to pan out before the clock expires. This had gone also to committee of the whole for discussion, and on page 2 of the staff report, there's a list of items that we discussed at that meeting. It was discussed at the meeting that the TDMP that was done prior to this being before the commission in August, that it wasn't robust enough. And so the city, both Public Works and CPED, sat down with SRF, the consulting firm that was hired to draft or write the TDMP, and we discussed with SRF what more should go into that. We've had several conversations about that. There is an approved copy of the TDMP in your packets. That TDMP was done, as you probably read, was done after the parking lot on the corner of 10th and 24th was closed. And so one of the problems, one of the problems with the site for traffic operation purposes is that parking lot, and it's a six-space parking lot, and there are sometimes as many as 22 vehicles squished into that small space. And there are two curb cuts, one from each adjacent street, which causes a circular problem of cars trying to rotate in and out of that lot. And so the TDMP that is approved and in your packets tonight was done after that lot was closed. As you have, as you know, and as you've read in the reports, and there is that table on page 4, there have been several different land use applications associated with this project going back to 2001. As part of those initial approvals in 2001 and then also in 2004, there were TDMPs that were done in conjunction with both of those projects. The first TDMP actually was done in 2000 when the city invested or was partnering with the landowners at the time to put them all in this location. And then the 2003 TDMP update that was done, as a condition of that update, there were to be audits done every two years for a period of 10 years. Those audits were not done, either by the applicant, by the city, by SRF. They were not done. And so the TDMPs that you have today have robust information in them. There were several different data collections taken. We have, or there are several conditions in the TDMP. And what I am, what I want to make clear is that the conditions in the TDMP that have been signed, it's a living document whether or not the expansion tonight is approved, or if there is an appeal, whether the expansion is ultimately approved. The TDMP will be audited once a year for the next five years, hopefully showing positive results and impacts made in traffic based on the different things that are laid out in that document that's in your packet. That is probably one of the largest updates that has happened or changes. There are some changes to the site plan that was also as a result of the committee of the whole meeting and the August Planning Commission meeting, based on feedback from you, the Commissioners, before me. And so I will go through the changes to the site and the changes to the elevations, and then walk you through the conditions of approval, and then I will conclude tonight, as we have spent a lot of time on this project. So this is the site. It's again between Elliot and 10th Avenues on 24th Street. This is located in the 6th Ward. This is the site plan. Sorry, I always have to remember what you see is not what I see if I'm in this little monitor. So this is the existing building in this location, and this is an existing, this is the deli that's a freestanding. This was the retail market when this had been a bakery prior to 2001. What is the addition, I apologize, is these four retail spaces, and then there are four office spaces that are proposed on the first floor of the building. So those are the total, that's the total increase in commercial or office activity. It would be four retail and four office spaces. And then on the second floor of the building, and let me show you that in color so it's of a comparison. So this is the, and these are all on your packets and online. These are the four, the four blue retail spaces, three of which have entrances facing the streets. The deli will now have a new door facing the street. These two office spaces will have entrances facing the parking lot, and there is a walkway then that connects back to that, past those two. And then these two office spaces are accessed internally from the market. The retail, excuse me, the office space here on this corner, that is for the security office. That will be located in the-
Sorry, can you move that up a little bit? Thank you.
Sorry. Should I start over?
No, that's-
Okay. So that's that. And then on the second floor, this area that is shaded in blue had been the prayer room or place of assembly, as we refer to it in our zoning code and in the packets for parking purposes. The prayer room is going to be moved to the addition, so there are windows on both elevations. And then this area of the building would be converted into storage. And then up on the second floor would be common space, just wide-open common space for those within the market. And then this is an elevation or a rendering, excuse me, of what that addition looks like, thinking back to some of the planning commissioner comments, and then also some of the staff recommendations about the design of the building. It is all brick. There is some metal that divides the storefront windows between the two floors. They've removed and simplified the cornice line of the building, and all of the onings will be of similar color. And then the whole building existing, the existing building will then all be painted a uniform color, and a lot of those comments or changes addressed the comments from the So just going back then to, we are recommending approval as we had in August. Going back to the conditions then, for the expansion of a nonconforming use, there are six conditions. The first is that all of the TDMP conditions shall be met, and again, regardless of if the expansion is approved or not, it is a signed document, and it will be adhered to. And the office space located on that northeast corner of the addition shall be occupied by building security and the police substation if that is approved. And again, that is dependent on the mayor's budget and council actions. Number three is that the applicant shall employ off-duty Minneapolis police officers on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from open to close to help with security and traffic operations on the site and in the public right-of-way. We have confirmed with the city attorney's office that we can add this condition. It's also in the TDMP because off-duty police officers are the only people that can actually direct traffic in the streets, or not the only traffic officers also could, but private security companies cannot direct traffic in the public right-of-way. And so to help with traffic operations, we are making this a condition of approval. We are not mandating, but we are encouraging the applicant to apply for a loading designation on East 24th Street. And if applied for, that loading zone should accommodate a minimum of two vehicles. Our suggestion in conversations had been either a 15- or 30-minute loading zone to help with those vehicles that are not loading prior to the opening of the day. The fourth one then is that the applicant shall provide the city Minneapolis parking brochure to all tenants within the building, and that those, that same parking brochure shall be placard at all of the entrances into the building to help with understanding the street signs and parking operations on the public streets. So those are the six conditions for the expansion of nonconforming use. I won't read through the ones with the site plan. However, I will point out, because this was brought up at the last public hearing, is that the fence enclosure around the trash bin is too short. It needs to be increased in height by approximately two feet to be as tall as that trash container. And so we have made that a condition of approval. There are some other, we are also asking or requiring that they place eight trash containers around the block to help with that, and that they maintain them, not asking the neighbors or the neighborhood organizations to do that work, but the applicant themselves needs to pick up trash within 100 feet and take ownership of those trash receptacles around the block. There are other conditions, but again, I won't read them, but I will stand for questions.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any questions of Hillary Dvorak? Commissioner Forney.
Where is the proposed entrance to the market? And where is it now?
Sure, there are several entrances actually into the market.
Is there a primary one?
I would say that there are several primary entrances. There is a primary entrance here on the north side of the building. There is also an entrance here off of 24th. There is another entrance here on 24th. And then there are several entrances along the parking lot here. For the addition, each of the ground floor uses facing a street will have an entrance facing that street. The existing deli grocery store will have a new entrance because currently it faces 24th. It will be relocated to the 10th Avenue side. And then the two office spaces here in yellow will have new ground floor entrances facing the parking lot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gisselman.
Hillary, just to be clear regarding the TDMP. So you explained that it is, it is an effective document regardless of whether this project gets approved today. Is that right?
Correct.
And so you were suggesting then that there is opportunity after today to reevaluate the effects of some of the implementations of the TDMP to assess how they've been effective?
Correct. Public Works, and I will be doing an audit with the applicant and SRF, who has been, as I understand, contracted to do one-year audits for the next five years.
And so that just happens annually?
Yes. I will put this in my calendar.
Okay. Commissioner Kronz.
Hillary, just a couple of quick questions. Condition four of the expansion of nonconforming is to encourage the loading zone. Is there anything that would prevent us from requiring those loading zones?
I can let Public Works speak to this. If, the reason it's not, we're not mandating it is traffic operations on a street can change, and they could be removed, and there is an assessed fee for having them. So that is why we're not requiring but encouraging, because things on the street themselves can change. If there, if you want further explanation, Alan Clugman from Public Works.
She's right.
Traffic and Parking Services is here.
I'll ask my other question, and Alan might be able to answer it too. So as part of the annual TDMP audit, would that potentially include the recommendation to look at one-way streets again? Is that something that could come out of that audit?
I will let Alan answer that question.
Good.
Or address that question.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the commission. I'm Alan Clugman with Minneapolis Public Works. So I think two questions we want to address. The first one regarding the loading zones, and kind of maybe a subtle point here, but we wanted to stress the phrase encourage the applicant to apply for those or look into those, rather than make it a condition of the TDMP. As Hillary was saying, from time to time, as things change on the street, generically speaking, add bike lanes, take bike lanes away, change number of lanes, width of lanes, et cetera, sometimes loading zones end up coming and going. And we didn't want to make this a required condition of the TDMP such that if a few years down the road, there was some reason why we needed to remove that or suggest removal of the loading zone or relocation to a different location. We didn't want to then have the TDMP be in violation. So kind of a lot of talking there, but the point being is we strongly encourage it. Our operations staff will work with the applicant to implement those, but we didn't want to make it a firm condition of TDMP, so we didn't have a future violation risk.
Okay. So right now, there are on-street bike lanes were added in the last year or two, and there was on-street parking there. So I mean, is there anything in your crystal ball that would say something would change, Alan?
No, there is not. It just, it was really Mars just kind of trying to be very careful that if something unforeseen were to occur, we wouldn't have a gotcha moment where that loading zone condition couldn't be met.
Okay.
Yeah, but to be very honest with you, I think if we put the loading zones out there, they will stay for quite some time.
Of course.
Okay. Moving on to the second question, relative to one-way circulation and one-way streets. Yes, that will be part of the audit. And I, you know, just kind of maybe marked this out in a few steps. We'll be doing the annual audits. If a conclusion from one of the audits is that a one-way street system is a potential mitigation of some sort of issue that was identified, and therefore the one-way system should be looked at, it would be looked at through that audit, or the audit process could, I would say, facilitate or engender us looking at the one-ways. Wouldn't guarantee that that would be the chosen, you know, solution, if you will, but that'd be the mechanism for which we could look at them. Okay.
Commissioner Rockwell and Commissioner Bender.
I have a sort of historical question, I guess, related to conditions 5 and 6 of the nonconforming use, which are the parking brochure. Is there, there is already from some prior action a requirement that transit passes are sold within the market? Is that correct? Or I guess my, so my broad question is, you know, is there a similar encouragement of transit? Because I know that this site is a block and a half from a high-frequency line, and that one of the hopes is that patrons are in fact not driving but taking alternate means.
That is one of the conditions of the TDMP, is that the owner-manager needs to offer the sale of onsite discounted transit passes.
Are there, are there then, you know, maps or some sort of indication around? Is there any, there's no requirement currently that there be some kind of transit map or indication of transit accessibility, the way there would be informational signs about parking?
I would think that when we would, when we would, that they would also have those maps available.
Cool.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I ask this every time, and I never can find the answer. Did the TDMP estimate the additional number of vehicle trips that are expected from the expansion?
I'd have to grab the full document. I don't have it right here, but Jordan Short from SRF is here. I could, or Alan might be able to know, because I know the public hearing is not open, but the traffic consultant is here if you would like to hear from him.
I guess the reason I ask is because the TDMP focuses a lot on parking, which I know is an issue, but, you know, just traffic itself has an impact, especially in a residential neighborhood. And I think that's really my bigger concern, is when we're looking at an expansion of a nonconforming use in an area that's not zoned for commercial, which in my opinion is probably zoned for what's, could be a lower intensity use in some ways. Industrial could, I suppose, go either way, but just kind of understanding the vehicle volumes in the neighborhood, I think is, to me at least, as significant as understanding the parking pressures.
Chairman members of the commission, I did my best to scan through this large document while you were talking. And so in the PM peak hour, the busiest hour of the center, it'd be approximately 15 to 20 additional, estimate additional car trips to the site.
Right. Are there any other questions of Commissioner Magrino?
What are the implications of not complying with the requirements in the TDMP regardless of the, you know, the application that's before us if we don't approve that? And I mean, what's our enforcement mechanism there?
So that's a good question. I don't think I've ever had an experience where we haven't had someone comply with them. So I guess I'm not sure, to be honest with you. I know, I know that's not the answer that you want to hear. I'm just, maybe I need to think for a minute about, about this, but maybe if Alan can think of any situations where this has happened, but this probably doesn't say much, but it would be my hope that there would be compliance with this, because there are things that we can, we can verify. I don't know if Alan has anything else to add.
Maybe not an exact analogy, but to sort of speak to the process of these being living documents. We have some where there's an ongoing commitment to spend a certain amount of money towards TDMP activities, and it might be three, four, five, six years later after the site's built, where we're still revisiting those sites to execute things. So for example, we had a site where there was a certain amount of money was put towards bike improvements, but they were to be staged over several years, and we had the mechanism to come back, much like we will with the audit here, and we did those bike improvements over time. The most recent thing we did was, I believe, added some locker facilities and bike repair stations, and that was a good five to 10 years after the original site, but it was an outgrowth of the TDMP. So, you know, they remain documents that we referred to and keep current with them.
So like, just for example, if, you know, you found that the applicant wasn't offering like the discounted transit passes or one of the other requirements on there, there's not like a fine or anything like that? It's more of an advisory sort of plan?
To date, we, there have been no fines put in place for noncompliance with a TDMP plan. As you can see in the first condition associated with the expansion of nonconforming use, it requires compliance through this land use application, which could trigger revocation of the, of the approval, which would be brought to the city council's zoning and planning committee. That's a fairly rare occurrence as well. Usually, we are able to obtain compliance. We are able to levy fines through lack of compliance with land use approvals. We just can't recall a situation where that lack of land use approval has been lack of compliance with a TDMP plan. So that would be a new, a new basis for a fine for us.
Anything else? Commissioner Slack.
This is a question that we seem to be asking a lot lately, but the current prayer space that's being converted to storage, what assurances do we have that that will stay storage long-term, and what assurances that that won't be converted to some other use?
As you know, when you make changes to buildings, you are required to come in for building permits. We also do inspections of buildings. This is a site where we have had routine inspections done inside of the building and outside of the building for different reasons. And so through those mechanisms, and if we can put flags in our permitting system, this is a site where if any permit comes in, it goes right to me instead of through our normal counter process for an internal remodel, if you want to say. So any, any changes that, any permits that would come in would be routed to me, and obviously I would flag that as a, we won't be approving any changes to the interior of the building.
Okay. Are there any further questions? If there are none, we can move forward. As you might remember, we held the public hearing for this item back on August 17. At that time, we closed the public hearing. However- However, if there is anyone who has new information, or anyone who did not have an opportunity to speak, I would certainly consider reopening that public hearing if there anyone, if there is anyone who wasn't here at that meeting. So we have at least one person would like to speak. So I'll reopen the public hearing in that case, and simply ask that you keep your remarks brief, not repeat things others have said. At the last meeting, I know everyone who had an opportunity to speak, or everyone who wanted to speak had an opportunity to speak, and we heard a lot of testimony. So reopen the public hearing, and you can come forward and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ashley Bray. I live at 2417 11th Avenue South. I have lived there currently since, I believe, June 1st. I moved back to Minneapolis after living in Wisconsin Dells for a couple of years. I moved away from there, being a Minneapolis kid. There was a serious lack of diversity. I wanted to move into a more diverse neighborhood, which I have. My cousins have owned this house, however, for over 10 years, so I have had a lot of experience in this neighborhood. As a resident of this neighborhood, our lives and the lives of my cousin's child, who is three, have been negatively affected by the lack of parking, by the uptick in crime, and by a few other things that have been going on with the mall. So what we are asking is that you would not go ahead with the expansion, but instead maybe revisit the requirements that the 2003 TDMP set, because we don't feel like those have been met. As a teacher, I promote diversity. I have, I teach in Minneapolis Charter Schools today. I was in Hennepin Elementary, where most of my students are very diverse. However, when I leave my school, which is all diverse people, and go back to my neighborhood, I do not feel safe if it's after dark. I very rarely, especially in the time window, I get home and able to park on my street. I'm normally parking on 12th or 13th, which is not a problem in the daylight. However, we're moving into a season where there is not daylight anymore. This summer, I worked outside and I worked on my cousin's house. I witnessed three hit-and-runs by travelers coming from the mall. One was to my cousin's truck. We never did resolve that. I've witnessed crime on 10th Street, which I have been advised not to even walk on, so I don't. As for the 2003 TDMP requirements, like I said before, and I wasn't at the first public hearing, so I apologize if I am repeating some of the things, but some of the things that we're seeing that were set forth 11 years ago were onsite sale of transit passes to tenants, there was no onsite sale of transit passes to patrons, onsite display of relevant transit information, promotion and support of bicycling and walking as viable alternatives. This one, for example, is, is really concerning to me as we have a three-year-old in the house, and there are many, many children on our street that are out on the sidewalk and in the street, and we have a lot of traffic coming through here, and they're not going very slow, and it is becoming a safety concern for all of the children on the street. There is no display of relevant walking and bicycling information. Some more things were promotion and support of car and van pooling as a viable alternative. We did have one side of the street that is now been required to have permit parking only, but I see that violated on a daily basis. There is a lack of remote off-street parking, and I believe the rest has kind of been touched on already. That is my piece.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who did not have an opportunity to speak last time or has new information? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Marge Magnuson. I live in the 2400 block of 11th Avenue. One of the things that's interesting to me is that Mr. Sabri has not made any effort to talk with the people that are going to be affected by this addition to his mall. I just have a couple of things. I talked to a realtor at our Midtown Phillips community meeting last Tuesday night. She was there on a different issue, but I asked, she found out where I lived, and she asked about the issue with the 24th Street Mall, and she said that it was difficult to sell homes in that area. People that she has, potential buyers that she has brought to the area have expressed sort of amazement, she said, at the congestion that is in that area. And we have lost, in our four-block area, we have a really strong block club, we have lost two families, two young families, that, and we need that for stability in, in the particular area we live. Although I do have to say that one family did move in, so I have, I do have to say that. But it seems like nothing has been done since we've had this conversation. No changes have been made. Parking is the main issue. I'm glad the mall is there. My husband and I moved in there into that block 26 years ago, when that building was dark, empty, no lights, and people were hanging out around there that had, did not have good motives for being there. So we're, I'm glad for the mall. I just took a jacket there last week to have the tailor put in pockets, an old jacket. But with that extension, with the addition, I think it's just going to put more pressure on, especially the parking issue, because park, I think you've heard this before, but customers, visitors, just, parking is so critical, and they, they just park all over. We have an empty lot on my block, and I just requested, and the favor was, it was done, that a barrier be put on the alley side of that empty lot, because people were parking in there, and it even made the alley difficult sometimes to get out. So basically, I think it's a livability issue. I think one of you mentioned this at a previous meeting. We don't, I don't want the mall to go away, but I just think with the additional spa, additional, the addition that's going to be put is just going to increase people coming to the area, and we already have just major, major issues with parking. Thank you.
Thank you. One more speaker? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of the mosque. Again, my name is Sadiq Warfa. It's S-A-D-I-K-W-A-R-F-A. I just want to thank you, the commissioners, for this opportunity. Again, since the last time we were here, I just want to highlight a few things that we did since the last meeting. One is the public announcement. Now the mosque, we regularly do distribute brochures to all the attending people who come to the mosque, to make sure that they follow the rules and the procedures of the parkings. So we give away brochures. And we also bring volunteers, committee volunteers, that clean, so we address the safety and the cleanliness and the parking, those three issues. I agree with the man who before me who just spoke, that since the mall was built, it improved the livelihood of the neighborhood. Those of us who've been here a long time ago can testify that how this area was. For me, I, I am a resident of the Vanjura Village and also a board member of Vanjura Village. This is the area that I lived the last 22 years, so I can tell you that the mall is a great contribution to our, our, our neighborhood. So we addressed two things. First of all, we now, every, when we have a prayer, the imam will do announcement, and we'll distribute brochures that talk about the parking. So we address that issue. The second thing is, we also put a team that goes two, three blocks by each side, so they will pick up delivering. So we address that also. And also the safety. The mall now hired two extra security and also off-duty police officers who come here weekends, and that also addressed it. I can testify this, because I've spent almost 10 hours a day in that mall, and I know this area. So we, if you don't approve this today, I can tell you, the expansion of the mosque, it will send a wrong signal to the community. That's something I can tell you right now, because the mall is, as I said, you know, we are working very hard, and the masks, to make sure that, you know, we address the parking issues, and also, and this announcement seems working. The announcement that, and distribution of the, of the brochures, it's working. So we are again asking you to approve the expansion of the mall. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And do you have some new, new information?
I'm Rachel, and I live on the 2400 block of 10th Avenue, and just, I'm just really, and you all have brought this up, I'm just really concerned about the loading and unloading on 24th Street between 10th and Elliot. Every time I go out and into my garage, I see multiple double parking, pretty much every time. My other concern is something, again, that you have brought up, is the enforcement. I feel that not only should the TDMP requirements be met, but that they should prove to be effective to, in addressing the current issues right now. You can look at my phone. Early in the afternoon, I called 311 to report illegally parked vehicles. Enforcement never came to ticket them. So, and this happens repeatedly, over and over again, every day. We understand, I chose to live in the neighborhood, knowing that there will be livability issues. I lived on 29th and Bloomington 20 years ago. I understand. I accept that. That's part of the reason why I'm there, is to be an agent of change. However, exactly the point we need to take into context, the reasons why this becomes a very important issue for us as residents, we are already accepting a level of livability issues. We're just asking you to please, don't intensify it to the level that our safety are so compromised. I can hear angry honking every single day, because of the double parking on 24th. Delivery trucks as big as semis blocking 24th. People are getting angry because they can't get through for half a block because of the double parking. I mean, it's really sad, and so I just urge you to please, unless we can really show that there will be enforcement, unless we can show effectiveness in this TDMP, in these conditions, especially not even having sufficient loading zone and unloading zone or delivery areas that the vendors will observe, I just cannot imagine putting the burden on the residents, because if this is built, there is no turning back, and the burden will be on the residents to keep calling and reporting issues, and then I don't know what will happen then. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And yes, please, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jordan Schwartz. I'm representing SRF Consulting Group here tonight. SRF, Walton-Carlson Parkway, Minnesota. I have a brief PowerPoint I'll run through here quickly. Make sure that gets up on your monitors. Are you seeing it on your monitors? No?
We're, we're not. I'm not sure.
Oh, wait just a moment until that.
Okay, so we, slight issue there. Maybe you could just summarize your presentation, if you don't mind.
Okay. And as noted previously at the last meeting, we were the, the firm which completed the 2014 TDMP, and the more recently, observations in June of this year, and then also September of this year. So I apologize for not having this working, but the numbers that I will discuss here are in your packets, the TDMP addendum, which is dated October 22nd. Originally going back to the 2014 TDMP, off-street parking was a mess in the lots. Capacity was exceeded consistently. Double parking, all those same issues that everyone is seeing in the streets were also occurring in the parking lot. With the implementation of pay and, and tenant-only parking in those lots, the operations of those lots have improved significantly, and so, however, numbers, utilization numbers from June of, of this year were thus down significantly, because after all, if there's available parking on the street, which is free and unrestricted, of course, people are going to utilize that first, and then go to, to the pay parking lot. However, we were also asked to do additional observations in September, and those utilization numbers went up a fair amount, however, there is still some improving to be done in, in terms of that utilization. After all, only one of the observed periods was Friday in the evening. Well, there's a brief glimmer of hope there. As I was mentioning, Friday evening was the one observation period in which the pay parking lot was completely utilized, and now you're seeing those numbers on your screens as well. You notice that what is shown here is, is 84% for that Friday evening period, and that your remaining capacity was actually available in the tenant parking lot. Just a few images from the lots there. Parking fees did not change from June of this year to September of this year. However, the images on the left were taken during September observations and show things are quite orderly in the lot. However, as you can see, there is still typically capacity that can be utilized in that lot. Southeast parking lot, the lot that would be eliminated for, to make room for the expansion, is certainly problematic, has been for quite some time. Typically, vehicles will, will route into that lot and circulate, looking for spots, and it is often quite full beyond the six stall capacity, which often leads to backing maneuvers into the street at the, is further exacerbated by the fact that there are offset intersections there, 24th Street and 10th Avenue. So closing that lot, whether it be by expansion or not, is certainly recommended. Now, what you're seeing here is utilization rates of unrestricted parking within a one-block radius of the Village Market. As you can see, these numbers steadily increase over the three observation periods. Now, you'll see in September that those numbers really jumped from June 2015. None of the, none of the conditions with the pay parking lot changed there. There was, however, the closure of the southeast lot for the September 2015 observations, so that would have displaced anywhere from, say, six to 14 vehicles, the vehicles that normally cram into that, that southeast lot. But take note that there is also an increased utilization. The pay parking lots overall, the September observation simply showed it was a much busier period out there than the June 2014, or June 2015 observations. It's also worth mentioning there, the September numbers, unrestricted parking, that is essentially at capacity, very limited number of, of spots available in those unrestricted spaces near the Village Market. However, going to this slide... However, going to this slide, which shows the total parking utilization, which also includes restricted resident parking, permit parking, you'll see that there is capacity remaining even in the September 2015 observations. However, that capacity is that restricted parking, the permit parking, resident parking. And it's not that unrestricted free parking. Just a few images here from operations on-street. As has been noted a number of times, delivery vehicles parked in the street. For example, the image on the left shows a truck parked in the bike lane on the north side of 24th Street. The image in the lower right shows a vehicle parked on the south side of 24th Street in the bike lane. And then the vehicle in the upper right shows Elliott Avenue on the east side where there is that permit parking from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And the three vehicles which are shown there are not permitted. They don't have a sticker on the bumper. However, just from being out there in the field, those are short-term, that is, short-term parking which occurs. It's people who are dropping off, picking up, or in the case of the taxi, waiting for a customer. Now, in going forward to the recommendations that came out of the TDMP, there are a couple of considerations, one for the city and one for area residents to consider. The first of which is to improve intersection site distance out there by installing additional no-parking signing with the goal of preventing vehicles from parking very near the intersections and thus obstructing site distance for vehicles and pedestrians approaching those intersections. And I don't know, Alan, can you mention if those have been installed or not already?
Is there any workbench issue?
Sure. And the other would be for area residents to consider requesting additional permit parking out there. As I mentioned earlier, there is capacity out there where the residential permit restrictions are in place. While there are a few violations, certainly, where there was available parking out there, it was in those permitted zones. So if parking capacity remains an issue, whether the expansion is built or not, something for the area residents to consider is the request of additional permit parking on at least one side of the street out there. And then moving on to the recommended TDMP measures for Village Market ownership itself, and some of these certainly Mr. Warwick mentioned previously, but I can quickly run through these. Incentivize carpooling, providing preferential parking for those carpooling vehicles or reduced parking fares. Advertise short-term free parking in the pay parking lot. And that's meant to target those vehicles which are performing those very short-term trips on the street, double parks, what have you, dropping a person off quick or picking up quick. And could even be utilized for deliveries that happen on 24th Street. That could even be done in the pay parking lot, free of charge. Reducing the parking fares to no more than a dollar an hour, again, just to encourage additional utilization of that pay parking lot. And then reserving a pay parking spot for deliveries. And some other final TDMP measures, not necessarily associated with the pay parking lot, coordinating that community outreach through the Imam of the on-site mosque. And it sounds as if some of that has been occurring already to address parking and traffic issues out there. As Mr. Warwick mentioned, the expansion of hours for the off-duty police officer out there. Installing some attractive lighting landscaping where there are bike racks out there, providing the bike route maps, offering the sale of the discount transit passes, providing that transit information, providing a guaranteed ride home, which is something that tenants, employees can utilize if they arrive via bus or some alternative form of transportation. Say they're not able to catch their bus home, providing a means for them to get back home. And then ideally ensuring deliveries prior to 8:30. However, it's understood that at least some of those deliveries can't occur prior to 8:30 AM. And then thus, they would have a spot in the pay parking lot to complete those deliveries, to make sure they're not occurring actually out in the street. And then finally, while we were out there, we observed 29 of the available 30 spots in the tenant parking lot were actually available for use due to an entrance gate blocking one of those stalls. So it's recommended to go ahead and move that gate just to clear up one more spot out there. And then finally, as was mentioned previously, the annual parking audits. I have submitted draft, a draft proposal to Village Market Ownership to complete the first of those, up to five audits. And we can move forward from there. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission?
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions? All right. I don't think we have any further questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think at this time we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have two applications before us, an expansion of a non-conforming use and site plan review. Would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Slack, are you about to craft a motion there?
Well, maybe, maybe not quite a motion yet. Maybe it's more of a comment, maybe before a motion. First off, I want to thank everybody who's here in attendance tonight and those who testified. We take everything that you say very seriously and goes into how we make decisions regarding projects like this. I guess it's maybe more of a question to my fellow Commissioners. I know I struggle with this project and I think we've asked a lot of the same questions over the course of the last couple of times that we've seen this project. And I think we've heard some testimony tonight regarding whether or not previous TDMPs from 2003 have been implemented and that a lot of the issues are livability and residents call police to come and ticket violators and police don't show up. And so for me, it's more of a question on how we actually follow through based on approval or denial tonight. And I guess my question is, in essence, if, is approval of this project better than denying the project, only from the sense that it sounds like from the residents' and the neighborhoods' point of view, it's really bad. The conditions are really bad now from a livability standpoint. Will this, will approval of this project improve that? Or will denial of this project just maintain how bad it is? And so that's a question that I'm sort of struggling with at this point. Because if we get to the point of a motion and a vote, I necessarily am not in favor of this project based on staff's recommendations. But if there is a way to ensure that the TDMP is followed through on and that if there is a way to, I know this would be difficult, but if there was a way to make sure that all of the conditions are followed through on and that things actually potentially could be better for livability in the neighborhoods, then I potentially would be in favor of the project. So those are the things that I'm thinking and I just wanted to put that out for consideration.
Commissioner Rockwell?
I'd like to, also just a comment, but sort of echo Commissioner Slack. I have some of the same concerns and I think, and I don't have conclusions at this point, but I am in part concerned with conflating a building with enforcement. And I guess I'd like to hear my fellow Commissioners chime in on that. I think there are issues of enforcement from the owners of the market and there are issues of enforcement from the city of Minneapolis. And all of that is getting lumped into what the building is and the use of the building is. And I'm not sure that all of that is fair, although it is all related. So that's sort of what I am struggling with. If we can all talk about what we're struggling with.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I will move to deny the expansion of non-conforming use permit and I would like to speak to that motion, may?
All right. We have a motion and a second.
No, I think that's an excellent question that Commissioner Slack raised. And I think the answer to the question about will expansion of this use improve the concerns that we've heard from a significant number of people who live nearby, I think the answer to that is no, from what I have seen. And so I think that the finding of number three, that the enlargement, expansion, relocation, et cetera, will not result in significant increases of adverse off-site impacts. You know, I disagree with staff's assessment of that and I think that it will significantly increase the off-site negative impacts that we have been hearing about from the neighbors. This use is a regional destination and it is a high-intensity commercial use. From everything I have heard about how the building is being used, and for better or for worse, we have use-based zoning in Minneapolis. This area is not zoned for that kind of intensity of use. And so therefore, I think allowing the expansion here of this non-conforming use just really doesn't reflect all of our policy guidance that says that, you know, this is an area that's an urban neighborhood, that isn't where we have designated space for high-intensity commercial use. And I think this is clearly a need in the community. There's clearly a need for high-intensity retail uses. There's clearly a need for mosque space. Mosques, by the way, are allowed in any use category, including industrial. But in terms of the commercial use of this space, I just think that we need to start saying that the more appropriate space for this would be in the areas of the city where we have zoned for high-intensity commercial uses, the places that we allow, the other malls that we have in the city. And so I can't support the expansion of non-conforming use.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Slack?
I guess also to add to findings is that necessarily item number two, I don't agree with as well, that the use is compatible with adjacent properties in the neighborhood. And then item number four, the project in my mind does not improve stability of the neighborhood.
Mr. Whitberg?
Commissioners, just as a reminder also, the findings that the Commission adapted previously are on page four. And two of those three findings may still be applicable. You may want to speak to those. The third finding was that they hadn't completed a TDMP plan. That issue has been addressed now, of course, but you've sort of touched on items one or two, but you may want to note whether those issues are still part of your concern in this action as well.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? And maybe I will just restate that motion. The motion is to deny the expansion of a non-conforming use. And I'll just read those two findings listed in the staff report. One, the expansion could contribute to existing livability issues, including littering, loitering, and property damage problems. Second, nearby residents demonstrated evidence of significant traffic congestion and circulation impacts associated with the existing use, including bicycle and pedestrian safety problems caused by double parking in public streets. And then we talked about a couple other findings today. One, that the expansion will increase off-site negative impacts due to its regional nature. And then also that the expansion is not compatible with the surrounding residential properties. So if there's no further discussion, Clerk, please call the roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
No.
Magrino?
I, right? Aye.
Yes, vote, vote aye to support the motion to deny.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Disman?
Absent.
Oh, sorry. Forni?
Aye.
And Bender?
Aye.
So it's five to one.
And that motion carries. Next, we have the site plan review. Would someone like to start us off with a motion on that? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move to deny the site plan review. I think the first item sort of makes the second item.
Right. The site plan, of course, is based on the approval of that expansion. Is there a second? Further discussion? Seeing none, or please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Forni?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Six, zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item number five. Our next item for discussion is item nine, which is a zoning code text amendment related to emergency and overnight shelters. And Ms. Suther is staff.
Commissioners, staff is here to present the overnight shelter zoning code text amendment. So what's presently on our zoning code books today is that in order to open a new overnight shelter, you have got to be one of two things. One is accessory, so that's subordinate and air and use and intensity to a religious institution or place of assembly, or be located in the downtown shelter overlay district. So staff set off with the direction of our co-authors, Councilmember Bender and Councilmember Gordon, looking at what the city of Minneapolis can do to improve our available options to provide additional overnight shelters. I have a few slides here with some statistics from Heading Home, or the Office of Ending Homelessness and Heading Home Hennepin. So we have tracked the usage of emergency and overnight shelters through Hennepin County. And the last unsheltered count, for example, was 207 and that was June of this year. Here is a map identifying all of the facilities that Hennepin County assists with funding to provide overnight shelter beds. You'll see many of these uses are not defined in the zoning code as an overnight shelter, either principal or accessory. We have boarding care, one boarding care facility. We have community residential facilities. Those are our youth shelters because they carry a Department of Health and Human Services license. The Drake Hotel takes in families and individuals. We also have the accessory and principal as shown here. And then several of our family shelters, including Mary's Place and People Serving People, are actually supportive housing uses that also provide additional beds for the principal use. And those circumstances are supportive housing. So this amendment is specifically around being a principal use. Here are some additional graphs that show the number of families in Hennepin County that are in shelter. And all of the shelters you see listed here are located within Minneapolis. Here are our single adults in Hennepin County. And this again was with the permission of the Office of Hennepin, Oklahoma Hennepin. And the total people in shelter. So you'll see that there's a peak in the October of 2013 of just under, or just over 2,500. And then the last count was just under 2,000 in June. Here's a wilder study showing some demographic information about who are our homeless population, how many fit within those specific demographics. We shared many, much of this information with the committee of the whole and at our community meetings. So that kind of brings me to our recap of the public outreach. So we formed a steering committee early in the process. So back in April, we met for the first time, or I'm sorry, March. We had three shelter, overnight shelters, steering committee meetings. It was mostly operators of shelters, nonprofit organizations with the goal of ending homelessness. And then the Office for Ending Homelessness was also there. We discussed the need for flexibility in the ordinance, providing additional locations that could be affordable, not uses that are typically able to create a lot of additional funds. So we need to find property that's also available. So for the proposed text amendment, we identified the need to really split out into two different categories. One is to create a new classification for emergency shelter. The intent is really to have a smaller shelter that would mirror the occupancy for a community residential facility in those districts, but would require a conditional use permit. So here is a map that shows all of the available land that would be appropriately zoned to allow for an emergency shelter. The stratification that you see is on occupancy. So the lightest blue color would allow up to six persons, kind of that medium blue is up to 16, and the darkest would be up to 32 persons. With the proposed text amendment, staff is also proposing a spacing requirement of 1,000 feet to avoid concentration, so you'll see that is applied to this map as well. So the existing accessory and principal overnight shelters have that concentric circle around it, and then those parcels within that area have been eliminated. The second type would be an overnight shelter as a principal use. So right now, as I mentioned, we only allow for overnight shelters in the downtown shelter overlay district. So here's a map showing the eligible area, kind of highlighted in orange, and then we have one property that's within that DS overlay that is actually zoned appropriately. So we have one principal overnight shelter within the city of Minneapolis. This proposed text amendment would allow, with a conditional use permit, a new overnight shelter up to 150 people in the C2, C4, downtown and industrial living overlay districts. Now, the only caveat to that maximum of 150 persons is if the building code requires not that many people, it's whichever is less. So of course, to meet health and safety standards by our building code, we'd supersede that then, like, of course, whichever is less. Here is a map in green showing some of our areas that would be added to the eligible areas to open a new overnight shelter. So a few of our corridors have been opened up, Central Avenue, Lake Street, the Hyawatha Corridor, downtown, of course. That's where predominantly we see the additional areas that would allow. There are some scattered green in all of the wards, so that would allow for an overnight shelter to theoretically be open in any one of our city's wards. And then lastly, overnight shelters that are accessory and currently accessory to a religious institution or place of assembly. Staff did not want to make those uses nonconforming. Therefore, we retained them in the zoning ordinance, and we added additional language. And again, here is where they're located. Sorry, look further. There we are, at the very bottom, that any of those existing overnight shelters that on the date of approval, and this assumes that we would go forward on December 11th, but that could, of course, change based on, once the council recognizes it, that those that are currently accessory to a religious institution, if that church or mosque or synagogue were to close, that they would be allowed to continue at their current occupancy without needing to come back to seek additional approvals. And we would allow for a conditional use permit to be applied for if additional shelter beds were to be requested. The off-street parking requirement, as proposed, we would expect zero. We didn't want to necessarily require a lot of parking, especially in our low-density districts, where we would be solving one problem to only create another problem, where off-street parking is not necessarily easy to provide on your standard 40-foot lot, for example. The maximum would be one space per bed. And for overnight shelters, we would determine the parking requirement based on the conditional use permit, and we do that for similar large congregate living facilities where we really need to understand more of the operations of that specific operator. How many staff will be present, how many beds, who is the intended demographic potentially? So we would evaluate that as part of the conditional use permit, and then that would be presented to the city planning commission. I think there was one more thing I wanted to add, but it's not coming to mind, so I will take any questions at this point.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Kronz.
Thank you, Shannon. I have a couple of general questions and a couple of questions on spacing.
Sure.
So both of the emergency shelter and overnight shelters would be conditional use permits. Do we know yet what the conditions of approval would be for those CUPs?
So what we have right now are proposed specific development standards for each use, and they're almost identical. The only difference between the two is addressing that maximum occupancy. For emergency shelters, in the proposed text, we actually put it right into the use table. So if you're zoned R1 through R2B, it's an emergency shelter serving six persons or less. So that's why it's not a specific development standard. But what we would be looking for is spacing, of course. Occupancy would only be for overnight shelters. We'd be looking for compatibility with new additions or proposed new construction with the surrounding area, appropriate transition area, which we would handle typically through site plan review. But if site plan review is not triggered, and instead we only have a conditional use permit because perhaps they're occupying an existing building, we have that additional provision to make sure that the use is compatible with adjacent property. The shelter gets to be provided in a closed waiting area or be serviced by appointment or unless the shelter's open 24 hours a day. A management plan, and many of the existing operators currently, when they know they're going to come forward, they take that management plan to the neighborhood associations and really work through a lot of the details to make sure that everybody's on the same page. At one of our community meetings, one of the representatives from the Jordan Area Community Council talked about how important that was for everyone in the community that was involved in the neighborhood at the meeting that day, and the operators to kind of understand how it works. And then they also followed up with a site visit, and then the additional provision for checking for litter, both on and off the property within 100 feet. So that would be primarily what we're looking for. Additional conditions could be around traffic congestion, size of the enclosed waiting area. Those are some additional ones where we may consider.
Okay, and you've mentioned the management plan, but is there any licensing or additional inspections required?
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to add. So the zoning code does not, well done, the zoning code cannot cover all bases. So we, so Councilmember Gordon introduced a text amendment that through our colleagues in the Department of Health require a lodging or board and lodge license for facilities. And they're still working through the specific parameters of the licensing component, but it's set to approve on the same schedule. If this zoning code amendment goes forward, they would go to the same city council meeting for consideration as a whole package.
Okay. And how does, I understand how facility attached to a religious institution would kind of operate and get funding, and how would a nonprofit or someone who's not associated with a religious institution get one of these up and running from a funding perspective?
Sure. What we found, and we have some operators that are here, they can tell you, is many of them are actually not affiliated with the religious institution directly. They actually are a separate entity, and they operate the business that they know how, which is shelters. And so they're, although tied by location, and maybe historically were tied due to philanthropic goals of that religious institution, they have now, many of them, no longer are the same entity. And so I can let the operators speak a little bit more.
Yeah, that'd be great to understand. So with everything, there's capital, money for capital, and there's capital, and there's money for operation maintenance. In most lines of work, capital money's easy to get, and maintenance and operations is more difficult, so I'd kind of like to understand that. I mean, I'm kind of reacting to a place I go by, past, forgive me for not knowing who operates it, but at 28th and through that First or Stevens, there's a, I think it's a church and some auxiliary buildings that have been under stucco repair for a long time, and I, you know, it's like these things have an impact on the neighborhood and the community, as you, I'm sure, well aware. So just wanting to make sure that, at least it's understood how these things are, come to be, and how they can be maintained properly.
I don't believe we have anyone here from Hennepin County, unless I'm wrong, but we have additional information around funding that is not necessarily specific to the zoning code text amendment, but we understand ongoing maintenance is our best effort to ensure that the compatibility with building additions and existing construction are through the specific development standards. So that would be applicable with.
Yeah, and there's basic city standards that every building has to comply to, feeling pain, you know, things like that. Moving on to the spacing questions I have, so other supportive housing proposals that we have seen recently, use the American with Disabilities Act to waive the spacing requirement.
Yes.
Is that something we might see with these uses?
It is possible, however, not necessarily likely. Many of the uses where we've seen individuals seek reasonable accommodation through the Federal Fair Housing Amendments Act is because they have a defined demographic that meets the definition of disability per the act. And in this case, many of our operators do not necessarily provide services to a specific demographic, or the demographic may change over time. So it's possible, for example, homeless veterans may qualify for reasonable accommodation. We have not had that request made of us before, but notwithstanding the amendment, I believe that's something that someone could apply for reasonable accommodation now if that was the case.
I believe, given a good attorney, anyone can be classified as a, the terms of the class, protective class. I think there's broad interpretation of protective class, but.
It's.
That's okay. Some other questions, you mentioned you did look at other spacing dimensions.
Yes.
Distances. Could you go quickly through that?
Sure.
That's really my last question.
Okay. So I apologize because colors changed, but I did it for readability, and then I wasn't able to update it in time for the planning commission this afternoon. It was something that we just used internally. There, okay. So in this example of the map, we have red for emergency shelters, yellow for overnight shelters, but anywhere you see yellow, red would also be allowed, okay? So if you can imagine, just watch the concentric circles around those uses. So this would be the 1,000-foot spacing, and this is quarter mile, and then we have half mile. So the effective difference between the 1,000-foot and the quarter-mile spacing is 350 feet or just under 1,250, something in that ballpark. So it's pretty negligible. Staff identified the 1,000-foot dimension because that's currently what we require for the downtown shelter overlay as one of the conditions for a new shelter. So we started with 1,000 feet. We thought it doesn't change the map significantly by requiring that additional spacing requirement, and seeing as how, right, it's essentially to allow more of these uses, and because there were not that many opportunities for the overnight shelter anyway, we thought the lesser spacing was appropriate.
You don't have the map you just did with?
Oh, sure.
With the, the ACIM maximums map?
I do not, but I can, I don't think I can do them necessarily side by side. If you can imagine where you see the yellow, though, the yellow is most likely where you're going to see the darker, plus quite a few areas along our corridor. So I'll try to just bring them up and see if I can do something as close to side by side as possible.
Yeah. And Commissioner Kronzer, I might suggest, if we have more questions, maybe it'd be a good idea to just take some testimony for since.
I don't, that's helpful.
Had around for an hour and a half now. So in that case, I'll open the public hearing right now, and Shannon maybe will have some more questions for you in a moment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. You can decide.
Thank you. Mr. President, commissioners, thank you for time this evening. My name is Steve Horstfield. I'm the executive director of Simpson Housing Services. We operate a shelter at 2740 First Avenue South. You, the, what you see on the outside of the building is unfortunately a problem with our landlord, if you will. The, there are some financial struggles within the Methodist Church from which we leased that space. And to the point that was made earlier about financing, just to give you a little bit of an insight, it's not, not easy work to get into, quote unquote, given that we are operating expenses for that shelter for 66 people each evening is running close to about $1 million a year at this point, more than half of which is raised through private contributions from the public. So as a nonprofit, we are owned by the public and are held to a certain accountability in all sorts of ways, through our board and through the way that we raise our funds and so forth. And in this particular case, this is, this is not easy, easy money to raise, if you will, for emergency shelter. I am here to speak in support of the proposed text amendment. Shelters are a critical resource in the continuum of services that lead Minneapolis residents back to housing stability. The South Minneapolis shelter that we operate has been a safe place for 66 members of our community, been operating for more than 30 years, and it also gives hundreds of volunteers an opportunity to engage around this issue each year. The, we are deeply appreciative of the work that's been done on this proposal, in that it creates new capacity for purpose-designed shelters in commercial zoning districts, and that it creates opportunities created for smaller residential-based facilities in mixed-use areas, and for the elimination of the requirement that shelters are only allowed as an accessory use as a place of worship. And as I, as I am here representing an agency that is only one of a handful of established shelter providers in Minneapolis, I can tell you that our primary interest is not in opening more shelters, that we would, we would only pursue the development of new programs where there's community support, and where we think we can do so in a better way in terms of more dignity, more dignity for our guests, and improved permanent housing outcomes. That's the only, the only way in which we'd be interested. Wherever possible, we are allocating all of our resources in permanent solutions to homelessness. And just to give you a little bit of idea of the scale, we've got 66 people in a shelter each night, we've got 400 households scattered around the metro of people who are formerly household, that are formerly homeless that we're supporting, because that's where we, that's where our focus is. One recommendation I'd like to quickly leave with the committee as you proceed with this work and with broader city planning, there are two, two established shelters represented here this evening, Simpson and St. Stevens, that have been operating successfully in South Minneapolis. As these programs serve 50 to 70 people each, respectively, and they're cited in R2B zoning districts, which I know is a particularly problematic district, given the way that it is cited in different chunks around the city, they actually would not be permitted as a primary use if they were to come into, apply for a new application now, and that's something to consider, as these are the operations that we know how to run and that are running in the city well, and that's something that we should consider in the future. So thank you for your consideration and your important work on this issue.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, go ahead, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Randall Cohn. I am a resident of the Whittier neighborhood at the 22nd block on Harriet Avenue, where my wife and I have rented the bottom floor of a duplex since we moved to Minneapolis since 2000, I mean, 2009. I'm now an attorney in Minneapolis, but most of the time that I've been here, I worked in homeless services as a shelter advocate, outreach worker, case manager, and ultimately as a program supervisor. So I speak to you today, therefore, with equal urgency from both of those roles, as a resident of, I think, a contested neighborhood, who wants to protect the vitality and diversity of that neighborhood, and also as an advocate concerned for the well-being of the poorest and most vulnerable members of our community. First, as a resident of the Whittier neighborhood, I moved to that neighborhood when I got to Minneapolis, in part because I appreciate its authentic diversity. And when I say diversity, I mean, in part, the internationalism that it so proudly declares on all of its signs, but I also mean real economic diversity. I quickly became proud of my community for the historic commitment of the churches in the neighborhoods, providing practical, direct services to help mitigate the impacts of the homelessness crisis, and of those churches and the service organizations that grew out of that work for sticking it out and finding ways to stay open.
My name is Randall Cohn. I am a resident of the Whittier neighborhood at the 22nd block on Harriet Avenue, where my wife and I have rented the bottom floor of a duplex since we moved to Minneapolis since 2000, I mean, 2009. I'm now an attorney in Minneapolis, but most of the time that I've been here, I worked in homeless services as a shelter advocate, outreach worker, case manager, and ultimately as a program supervisor. So I speak to you today therefore with equal urgency from both of those roles as a resident of, I think, a contested neighborhood who wants to protect the vitality and diversity of that neighborhood and also as an advocate concerned for the well being of the poorest and most vulnerable members of our community. First, as a resident of the Whittier neighborhood, I moved to that neighborhood when I got to Minneapolis in part because I appreciate its authentic diversity. And when I say diversity, I mean in part the internationalism that it so proudly declares on all of its signs, but I also mean real economic diversity. I quickly became proud of my community for the historic commitment of the churches in the neighborhoods providing practical direct services to help mitigate the impacts of the homelessness crisis and of those churches and the service organizations that grew out of that work for sticking it out and finding ways to stay open, even as the churches that hosted the shelters and the congregations that attended them faced deterioration. Let me be clear, I am proud of the shelters in my neighborhood. They symbolize to me what it looks like to put the progressive values and care for others that many in this city like to claim into practice. And they stand for a recognition that the people who seek shelter are not intruders into our community or a threat to it, but rather are some of the most vulnerable members of our community. I support this amendment because it will affirm that historic commitment in my neighborhood and will make it more likely that other neighborhoods in Minneapolis whose residents share Whittier's values will be able to provide similar services. As a homeless service worker and advocate, I will add the following. The work that shelters do is hard. Shelters that provide emergency services have to hustle to stay open. They never have enough resources. They must be flexible and responsive. And even as they literally work to help members of our community survive the winter, they must also constantly fight to justify their existence to people who see them as threats to property value and development projects. The current zoning rules make it that much harder, tying up one hand of advocacy organizations and forcing them to perform a charade of association with religious organizations in some cases, some of which largely continue to exist as religious organizations only in order to allow the shelters to continue to exist. What this amendment would allow in effect is for the organizations that are already taking on the burden of providing life saving emergency support to our city's most vulnerable populations to do so in good folk, in good faith, with both hands and facilities that are safe, efficient, and appropriate to their purpose, and that are better able to allow the people who benefit from those services to do so with dignity. Finally, I want to briefly address some of the concerns that I've heard articulated by organizations purporting to represent the interests of my neighborhood, specifically that it will contribute to an increased density of low income housing in particular neighborhoods, an argument that is offered with a straight face in the name of addressing systemic housing inequity in our city. These, these arguments are pretextual and make the dubious move of attempting to reframe what is simple cynical nimbium as concerns in the interests of justice and equity. There is enough obfuscation in the language that our city uses to talk about its efforts to address the needs of its poorest people. There is enough empty boosterism about our supposedly progressive efforts to end the crisis of homelessness that often provides little more than a smokescreen for measures designed to remove visible poverty from commercially developed and developing parts of the city. I ask in light of all of this for simple candor and your deliberations. This amendment will remove an arbitrary, antiquated, and very possibly illegal barrier to those doing essential humanitarian work in our cities. While we continue the very important and difficult work of addressing structural inequity in housing and other areas, there continues to be a crisis on the streets every day, and that crisis needs to be managed. This amendment is not about how we will solve the bigger problems, it's about how we manage the crisis. Please don't make saving lives every day any harder than it has to be. Thank you, council members Bender and Gordon for your leadership.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker. Go ahead. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm Gail Dorfman, the Executive Director of St. Stevens Human Services. We operate two shelters, our main shelter in the rectory of St. Stevens Church that shelters 45 men every night of the year, and our emergency winter shelter that just opened last night at the River of Life Church on the north side. I want to thank council members Bender and Gordon for bringing a shelter zoning amendment forward and to city staff, particularly Shanna, for all the work done on this together with both shelter providers and with the community and to the planning commission for your consideration. In heading home Hennepin, our city county 10 year plan to end homelessness, we state that the best way to end homelessness is to prevent it in the first place, but when someone does become homeless, that systems will be in place to get people off the streets and out of shelter as quickly as possible and into safe and stable housing. Shelter is not housing, we're really, really clear about that in our 10 year plan, but is often a critical stop on the way to housing. Last night in Hennepin County, similar numbers to what Shannon reported, but just last night there were 298 families with 850 children in shelter. There were 695 single adult men, 162 single women, we've seen that number creep up, 68 teens. The last unsheltered count in July found just under about 200 people unsheltered outside. And the Salvation Army on Curry Avenue is now limiting their overflow space, meaning that somewhere between an additional 30 to 70 men and women could find themselves with nowhere to go at 10 o'clock each night when Salvation Army reaches capacity. We need safe dignified shelter spaces where people can get out of the cold and move quickly toward housing. This text amendment moves in the right direction toward meeting this need. It does not mean that there will be homeless shelters all over town. That's the last thing any of us want or need, and the text amendment and the accompanying licensing provision guard against that, but it does provide the flexibility to develop a different kind of shelter than once allowed today, only accessory to religious institutions in the basement of a church as ours is, with no ADA access in the case of ours. It allows for smaller shelters serving specific populations like LGBT youth who have almost nowhere to go now, single adult women, seniors, people with disabilities, and it allows for a shelter as a principal use in a commercial district on a transit quarter, improving access to jobs, housing, and services. Ending homelessness means fewer people will become homeless and when they do, will have the emergency shelters and overnight shelters in place to ensure that homelessness will be rare, brief, and non-recurring. I urge you to support the shelter zoning text amendment. It is a thoughtful, measured way to provide the shelter space needed to end homelessness. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next speaker. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Phil Durian. I'm the Legal Director for an organization called Out Front Minnesota. We're the largest organization in the state that works for full equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender individuals and our families. We've been located in the Sabathany Community Center at East 38th Street and Third Avenue South for almost 30 years. The need for shelter, both short term and ongoing, affects many people in the Minneapolis community and including many LGBT folks, particularly young people. Recently, the Wilder Foundation estimated that in Minnesota, some 12% of homeless individuals, homeless youth identify as LGBT. The Williams Institute, which is associated with UCLA, estimates that in some parts of the country, that number could be as high as 40%. Many LGBT youth and adults are on the streets and in need of, of shelter services because they've been rejected by families or communities for reasons which ultimately derive from religious viewpoints. Where current Minneapolis policy requires that overnight shelter services be accessory to places of worship, you can perhaps imagine the tension that that creates for those in our community who need service but who are afraid to seek it at such facilities. We've worked with people who have been either mistreated or in fact turned away from such facilities. That fear is real. It's important though to recognize that in many, many instances, that fear is unfounded. In recent years, there have been tremendous changes in the viewpoints of people of faith regarding LGBT folks and in, on behalf of LGBT folks regarding people of faith. We know that so many staff and volunteers part of these services are deeply committed to treating every person who shows up with dignity and respect, but we do know that the problem continues. We support this proposal tonight, we hope that you will as well, because it ends that automatic link between overnight shelter services and congregations. It wouldn't, to our knowledge, interfere with those services that are being provided, but it does create the possibility of creating new and different kinds of services that will help all people in our communities, certainly including those in the LGBT community. So we hope that you'll support this proposal. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to, to try to answer them.
Thank you.
If not, thank you.
And next speaker. Afternoon. My name is Ryan Stupera. Live on the 32nd block of Lindell South. Social worker, I've been working with the homeless for about 10 years. I'll piggyback on a lot of what everyone said that this just makes sense. It's practical, it's pragmatic, it's, it's time, it's been, it's been moved through before and it hasn't passed. And as everyone said, it's a, homelessness is obviously a very complex issue and to have it siloed into the situation we have now, concentrated in specific areas and, and limited in its scope and what we can do, just doesn't make sense in addressing it in the way we know we should. And just to, to avoid redundancy and everyone shared really great points, the, the great thing about this whole process was, I was part of that forum and we had council members, community members, social workers, and individuals experiencing homelessness in the same room. And again, for a process to have the most vulnerable, the poorest citizens of Minneapolis be in that space and at the table and be heard and then see something actually move through and be passed is, is good for our city. It's the way we should operate. And the, the, the thing that I took away from that day was they didn't want more shelters. As we said, that doesn't address the issue, doesn't solve homelessness. They want more options to effectively and efficiently move forward in self sufficiency. I think this amendment will get us there. So you all look convinced, I think, this will pass. So thanks for your time.
Thanks. Uh, next speaker.
Thank you. I'm Cam Gordon. I'm a co-author. I happen to live at 912 Franklin Terrace, Minneapolis, Minnesota, in Ward 2. I just wanted to briefly highlight that I am also inter, introduced and I'm working on a parallel ordinance that would involve the city's health department in providing some oversight, which I think will be key. So far, the things that we've really articulated that they, to work on is maintaining the physical building in good condition, keeping it clean, especially free of pests, also complying with fire regulations, providing laundry service and access to laundry facilities, and providing appropriate restroom and shower facilities. Beyond that, we aren't looking at, at many other changes. And I also just wanted to note that the shelter system that we've had in the city since I've been on the council and it's about 10 years, really hasn't been working. And it's been strange and it's been difficult to look at what will be the possibility of changing it and opening it up. I believe what we have here is a carefully, well thought out, reasonable solution where we're opening it. I think we may discover, we open it and it doesn't really result in more beds because we're being so careful, but at least we, I think we can open it. And we're really creating some, I think, interesting possibilities with the smaller emergency shelters for some more customized shelters that we hear about dramatic need for. Isn't there a place, I'm a, I'm a young woman, I don't feel comfortable going to these big shelters, I have nowhere to go, couldn't there be another shelter or something more culturally specific? Or something that's more aligned for, for more youth? We have a lot of youth. And I think we actually have more people who are homeless that we don't know about because they're couch surfing, living in cars. And if they actually thought, oh, I can go somewhere, I have a shower, I can stay there for 30 days, I might even have some support services that could get me some treatment or something like these emergency shelters could do, I think we'd be meeting a real need there. So I think that we're doing this in a way that will allow more shelters to get created and serve more people, but also probably preserve and I think even enhance the quality of life in some neighborhoods. In my neighborhood, there's many homeless people, they end up living down by the river and, and just, and that, people don't really like having that around either. So this is an opportunity to provide some alternatives. And I'm happy to stand for any questions if you have any and appreciate the time.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? There is no one else. Close the public hearing and Commissioners, are there any further questions of Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shannon, could you, in the peer city research, almost every other city allows shelters in high density residential areas. Could you talk more about that because our proposal does not? So one question is, does this peer city research table reflect what we are calling overnight And then could you talk more about why we decided not to include high density residential
So staff found a variation of cities, pure cities, that define two different definitions. So they'll, they'll parcel it up. The most closest example to what our amendment is suggesting is the city of St. Paul that has the smaller facilities as the emergency shelters, large facilities as overnight shelters. And essentially, we, we kind of treated it pretty similarly to St. Paul. There are other cities where they're all treated the same way and high density residential was a consideration. We initially started to look at overnight shelters, the larger facilities being more akin to supportive housing, and we do allow supportive housing in our high density residential districts. So it's not to say that that wouldn't be a possibility, it just, this was such a large change from the existing regulations, which are so stringent. We talked about perhaps a more incremental approach and, and that's what you see before you today. So it's not to say that there is not flexibility for change, there isn't, you know, the zoning code, as we all know, is a living document. We are more than happy to come back to the planning commission, city council for report when the necessary to determine whether or not this was an effective amendment. But as far as talking about shelters and when we talk about it as staff, we talked about community meetings, we talked about it in the steering committee meetings, we said we want to see the opportunity for shelters citywide. This does that, does it do it to a point that is going to make sense for some of our larger operators? Maybe not.
Okay. I think that's a helpful clarification and just also wanted to note that we, we also did discuss C1 as well and, and that has also not been included, I think for the reasons that you outlined. So what we landed on was a, what is a relatively restrictive expansion to C2, C4 downtown in the industrial living overlay district. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, would someone like to start us off with a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the text amendment to allow emergency and overnight shelters as a principal use in certain districts and return chapter 550 industrial districts of record.
Second, we, we have a motion and a second, and that was a motion for staff recommendation, just to clarify. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I just want to take this chance to say thank you to everyone who's participated in this. We spent a long time on this issue and it is really important and really sensitive and staff has really gone above and beyond. And Shanna, just thank you so much for everything you did and folks who stepped up. Mr. Stupera was a little modest and, and he organized the meeting that we held, speaking with folks who were experiencing homelessness, which was so informative as we tried to understand how these uses, you know, really serve, I mean, we think of these sometimes as a, as a land use issue and, and really bringing that to life and how it's impacting people's day to day lives as they, you know, work to get back into housing and, and just to understand those specific day to day needs. And I thought also the two public meetings that we held were very enlightening. We learned in one of the neighborhoods where folks were working with a new shelter, they did a tour of the facility and folks left being more concerned about the people who were being served in the shelter than they were about the impacts on their neighborhood. And I think that just goes to show that, you know, as we involve people in these discussions, you know, we all know that homelessness is, is a problem in our community. It's one that I think unfortunately is growing in a lot of populations and this is us stepping up to provide the beds that we need for people who are in need. So I was really thankful for everyone who took the time. I know it was a really important priority for many of my colleagues to not concentrate shelters and we have gone, we have strived to create a policy recommendation that distributes shelters as much as we can and as much as practical. And then again, we landed on what I think is, you know, a relatively modest expansion of, of what are really the most, I think, cost effective shelters to run, which is our largest shelters. I think the folks who are operating shelters would have liked to see us go farther than we did in this proposal, but, but again, because it is such a large change, you know, Councilmember Gordon and I felt the most comfortable with this as a first step. So obviously very supportive of this change and thanks again to everyone who's been involved.
Commissioner Cronshaw. Yes, thank you. I think this is a great strategy and I, I think it's very important that we all understand that this is a citywide, this isn't things focused in the neighborhood south of downtown or near north. This is a citywide effort. There's a homeless shelter, overnight shelter that could be way south down in the end of McCliff Avenue, which is, which is wonderful. You know, I live in Whittier, I live in Harriet, actually. We're neighbors. And I, I think it's very important that we, we look at policies that are citywide because they do affect all sorts of people. There are no, homelessness is not describable against anyone. The one minor thing I would like to see would be a little bit more spacing to a quarter mile on emergency shelters. I think at 300 feet, wow, seems miniscule for a place like Whittier, it might make the difference a little bit, but I'm very supportive of this motion. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any further discussion? And I, I'll just add, I, especially when looking at the peer city research, I, I was really struck by how restrictive we currently are and maybe how outdated our regulations currently are for. are for meeting a very important need. So just wanted to thank our two authors and everyone who put time into this. So if there's no further discussion, please call the board.
Bender? Aye. Konzer?
Aye.
Carrina?
Aye.
Rappel?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Five zero.
All right. And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on that item and concludes our business for tonight. We have committee of the whole on Thursday. Mr. Winberg, do you have another announcement?
Commissioners, given the timing, you may want to consider stopping by the Pillsbury relighting that starts at 6:30. The Pillsbury sign up top of A Mill is being relit, starting in festivities that began at 6:30.
All right. And that concludes our meeting for today. We're adjourned.[1773.33]